Good evening, everybody. For the record, Thursday, July 9th, 2020, time for the regular meeting of the Wenatchee City Council. We are out of executive session. I've called the meeting to order. We always start our meetings with a pledge to our flag. So, Councilmember Harold, would you lead us?
I will.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Harold. Roll call this evening. We have six councilmembers with us. Councilmember Esparza is on vacation today. First item are consent items, which includes approving this evening's agenda vouchers and the minutes from the previous meetings and the motion to accept work by the contractor Rodarte on the Old Station Sanitary Sewer Expansion Project. So, I entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, vouchers, and minutes from previous meetings, and also to make a motion for the City Council to accept the work performed by the contractor.
Consent items, which includes approving this evening's agenda vouchers and the minutes from the previous meetings and the motion to accept work by the contractor Rodarte on the Old Station Sanitary Sewer Expansion Project. Do I entertain a motion?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, vouchers, and minutes from previous meetings, and also to make a motion for the City Council to accept the work performed.
All participants are muted, and they can unmute themselves.
Okay. Wow, that was interesting.
It was interesting and repetitive.
So, for the folks at home, if you were not muted, we got all kinds of feedback. So, apparently, I just muted you, and then, at some point, when we get to the public hearing, I'll either undo this, or you can unmute yourself and talk. But we were getting tons of feedback here. So, I'm sorry about that. All right.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda, vouchers, and minutes from previous meetings, and also make a motion for the City Council to accept the work performed by the contractor, Rodart Construction, on the Old Station Sanitary Sewer Expansion Project, Phase One Gravity Sewer, Project 1718, and further authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher certification on behalf of the city of Wenatchee.
Second, we got a motion by Councilmember Huffaker, and a second by Councilmember Hornby to approve today's agenda, vouchers, and the minutes from their previous meeting, and to authorize and accept the work performed by the contractor Rodarte Construction on the Old Station Sanitary Sewer Expansion Project, Phase One Gravity Sewer, Project 1718, and further authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher certification on behalf of the city of Wenatchee. Discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, our first two items on this evening's agenda are both public hearing items. The first is regarding zoning issues with respect to certain properties inside the city limits of the city of Wenatchee. The second is related to public disturbances and/or noise ordinance. So, for those of you that are home or on the phone, we will deal with the public hearing item regarding the land use first. And so, for public hearings, we will hear from staff. We will ask questions of staff. We were done asking questions of staff. We'll turn it over to any members of the audience who are listening at home, who'd wish to comment, and I'll take those in some sort of order, and then we'll turn it back over to the council for any action they may be willing to take. So, should I think about taking this off of the mute button, or should we just keep going for now?
Keep going for now.
Keep going for now, okay. So, Stephen Nuschwander is here on behalf of the city, so regarding ordinance 2020-11, regarding amendments to Title 10, regarding zoning, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This evening, we're here to discuss the interim ordinance that was passed by the City Council back in February of 2019, and the extension of that in January 23rd of this year. That interim ordinance related specifically to places of assembly in residential neighborhoods. City staff received complaints regarding potential or received a pre-application meeting with a potential developer in residential neighborhood that was proposing a large outdoor venue for concerts and other activities with amplified sound. In the same timeframe, the city received complaints from neighbors regarding outdoor worship of places of worship with sound amplification. The city council adopted the interim ordinance so that the city staff and planning commission could review this matter. The interim ordinance was extended in January for additional six months. In that timeframe, the planning commission had a schedule and plans to complete this and have it back to you in March. As you're aware, all of our meetings were canceled in March, April, and May due to coronavirus, and so those meetings were canceled and have been pushed into June. The planning commission held a public hearing on June 17th, and at that hearing, they unanimously recommended the amendments to Title 10 of the zoning code, and those amendments are specific to land uses as it relates to places of assembly. So, the topic of noise, such as decibel levels, outdoor amplifications, are not part of the land use component, but are handled separately this evening in the public hearing for ordinance 2020-12. So, the items recommended by the planning commission include revisions to the definitions, the district use chart, waterfront mixed use, the off-street parking standards, and conditional uses. I'll go over those changes now. So, at the heart of the interim control was the definition of a place of assembly, which had a very broad definition that allowed a variety of uses in a residential zoning district. And so, as the planning commission looked at this matter and staff worked with them, the easiest solution was to delete the definition of a place of assembly, and in its place, use other already existing uses and come up with new definitions. And so, by deleting that, we added, as a proposal, a transit center, a sports entertainment venue, a convention center, and this would cover uses such as the convention center downtown, the performing arts center, the town Toyota Center, Olympia Station, which are all existing uses which would have or could have been reviewed as a place of assembly because that definition is so broad. Also a component of this, as we were looking at definitions, was the place of worship, and our current definition of a place of worship is simply a location where there's a congregation and they're worshiping for religious purposes. The proposed definition expands on that and identifies uses such as a parish, or a kitchen, or some other uses that would be normal to have in a church that we get often questions on. And so, the proposed definition recommended by the planning commission simply expands that. It also identifies which uses are not secondary to a church. Oftentimes, churches, the places of worship, have schools, daycares, or other accessory uses, and this definition identifies that while those could be allowed in a place of worship, they would have to seek additional approval to have those uses occur within a place of worship. In light of those changes to definitions and deleting place of assembly and the addition of the other uses, that has a domino effect or cascading effect throughout the code. And so, we looked at our district use chart in removing the use of place of assembly, and in its place, adding those other types of uses. Also had an effect on the waterfront mixed use district, which has a maximum building size in it, and places of assembly fell within that category, and so, we updated that section as well to add the new uses. As well as off-street parking, deleting references to the place of assembly, and then assigning new parking ratios for the proposed uses. This also occurred in the conditional use permit chapter, again, deleting the reference to place of assembly, updating section titles. Also, the city last year updated and adopted a new sign ordinance, our conditional use permit section for places of worship, places of assembly, had a sign standard, and so, as part of that update, we're recommending the planning commission agree that our updated sign ordinance adequately covers those non-residential uses in our residential neighborhoods, and so that section is proposed to be deleted. And then also clarifies that an auditorium, which is an allowed use in our zoning districts, that be secondary in nature to whether it be a place of worship, a place of assembly, such as a school, so that someone couldn't come in and cite an auditorium in a neighborhood, which would be completely out of character with that neighborhood. So, it becomes, it's allowed, but secondary to an already allowed use, such as a school or a place of worship. Just clarification there for a use of how that would be applied. As I mentioned, the planning commission recommended unanimously that the council adopted these, recommended amendments to Title 10 zoning, and we have a proposed motion that would accept the planning commission's recommendation regarding amendments to Title 10 of the Wenatchee City Code as set forth in ordinance 2020-11. That concludes my presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Laura, you want to help me unmute these folks?
I do have a question before we open it up to the public. I was talking to Glenn yesterday about this because it is, you know, we have snippets of the things that are being changed, and I was wondering how things fit in, like in the district use chart, the complete list of district use charts. Do you happen to have that?
I do. The council is interested. I have all eight pages of our district use chart.
Places of worship are allowed in all of our districts, right? Some places it's an allowed use, and the rest of it's conditional use?
They're conditional uses in all of our zoning.
In all of our zoning districts. Okay, thank you.
Same with other assembly items such as a school.
Okay.
Listened as a conditional use. And that is on, so I highlighted on page four is where those changes are occurring in the scheme of the whole chart, and those are under our public assembly uses, so that's where we identify auditoriums, and deleting places of worship, and then the addition of the transportation center, convention center, and the sports and entertainment venue.
And it's underlined because it's new? Correct. Yes, that's. I saw that in the packet, and I couldn't figure it out. Strike-throughs are deletions, underlined items are additions. And so, you'll see in that on page four, again, under public assembly is where we identify places of worship, and schools, neighborhood centers, libraries, museums, and all similar type uses that would, the public would generally assemble in.
If I could use this one?
You can come up here if you want.
And just to, Glenn DeVries, Community Development Director, just for clarification, should this be adopted this evening, it would eliminate the interim control that Mr. Nuschwander spoke to, and within 30 days of publication of the ordinance, that interim control would no longer be in effect.
And just for my edification, the interim control that we adopted dealt with both the noise ordinance and amplification and the land use both?
Correct. It dealt with amplification, such as for noise impacts, and then it dealt with the land use issue.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions for either Stephen or Glenn? So, for those of you listening at home, I'm going to attempt to unmute all of you by hitting star five twice. See all this work.
All participants are muted. All participants are unmuted.
All right, so we've now unmuted our friends at home. So, how many folks do we have on the call right now? I heard three earlier. I'm not sure how to do this public testimony. We are having this discussions regarding the land use and not the noise ordinance. So, I'm just going to try to figure out if there are some folks that want to address the council regarding the noise ordinance, excuse me, regarding the land use ordinance. Would you mind just saying yes, so I can kind of get a view of how many folks are there? Not hearing anybody that wants to talk about the land use, but mostly the noise ordinance. I think we can turn the land use back over to the council for any action they may have.
Mayor, I have just one question for staff that was on the definition, and this isn't a huge issue, but it still seems to be pretty generous in its scope, which is fine. Did the planning commission ever consider any other parts of the definition, like having federal tax exempt status, you know, that someone goes through to, so we don't end up with the Church of Apostropharians, for example? Any of that discussion?
No, the planning commission didn't get into those kinds of details.
Okay. Just curious.
Any other questions for our staff? In that case, I would turn it over to the council for any action they may be willing to take.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2020-11 regarding proposed amendments to Title 10. Excuse me, let me just read the ordinance.
Have it on the screen.
Oh, yeah, you do. I make a motion to accept the planning commission recommendation regarding amendments to Title 10 zoning of the Wenatchee City Code as set forth in our ordinance presented to us, 2020-11.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Kulas, and a second by Councilmember Harold to adopt ordinance number 2020-11, accepting the planning commission recommendations regarding amendments to Title 10 of our zoning of the Wenatchee City Code as set forth in this ordinance. Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Stephen.
Thank you.
So, our next public hearing item is regarding, for lack of a better term, the noise ordinance. That would be ordinance number 2020-12. And again, for this public hearing, we'll hear from staff, and we'll get questions of the council of staff, and then we'll turn it over to any members of the public that wish to discuss this item with the city council. So, on behalf of the city, it's the city attorney, Steve Smith, and Glenn, are you going to be up here with him as well?
I am available, yes.
Okay. So, at this point, we'll turn it over to the city attorney.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Steve Smith, city attorney. Before you is ordinance number 2020-12 related to the city's public disturbance noise ordinance. The city currently has a noise ordinance that prohibits just generally loud and raucous, frequent, repetitive, continuous sounds that unreasonably disturbs or interferes with the peace, comfort, and repose of another, and can be clearly heard by a person of normal hearing at a distance of 50 feet or more from the property which the sound originates. So, it's a kind of a reasonable man standard, which is lawful, but it's pretty subjective. We have exceptions to that ordinance that pertain to regularly scheduled community events conducted on property owned by a governmental agency or public school district, and conducted with the express permission of a representative of the property owner, regularly scheduled parades held in the city and authorized by the city, and then also preparation for these regularly scheduled events. A regularly scheduled community event is defined as a public sporting event or a public concert held on property owned by a governmental entity or public school district and conducted with the express permission of an authorized representative of the property owner. So, the way our current code is written, a school event or an event on public property would be accepted from our noise ordinance, and so, we ran into a potential conflict with religious organizations holding events that would have amplified sound outdoors, and so that raises the issue of whether our noise ordinance would violate the federal law, the Religious Land Use and Institutional Persons Act, because we're not treating religious organizations the same as these other entities, and there is the potential for that, that we're not treating them on equal terms. So, the ordinance that we are proposing redefines the exceptions so that it would be, rather than a regularly scheduled community event, defined as being an event by governmental agency or public school district on public property, now we've opened it up, or would open it up, to include public gatherings that any member of the public may attend. That's a difficult standard or difficult definition, and, you know, whether we limited it enough, I mean, that's up to the legislative body to determine, but that's what we're trying to do, is to make this more equally applied to not just schools and governmental entities, but also to the religious organizations. So, that's what this ordinance would do. You have any questions for me?
Yeah, I don't have any questions at this point, but probably some comments, but I think maybe it's okay at this point to hear from members of the public. Is that okay, councilmembers? All right, so, members of the public, I don't know how many of you are there. Again, if you're interested in public comment regarding our ordinance number 2020-12 relating to the noise ordinance, you might just say yes, so I can get an idea how many folks are there?
Yes.
All right, I heard three people. So, I don't know how to go in order, so how about if your last name is between the letters A and F? Do we have anybody with a last name between A and F?
Me, Ashley Davis.
Perfect. Ashley Davis is our first caller. So, Ashley Davis, I need to know your address for the record.
Okay, I live at 313 West Peter Street.
Thank you. All right, Ashley, we'll give you two or three minutes, so if council's listening.
Okay, here it goes. As a member of the residential community that neighbors Gray City Church, I have been heavily involved in the discussions regarding the permitting and sound ordinances discussed over the past year with the planning commission. That said, I think it is imperative that I begin my time addressing the potential conflicts of interest regarding this matter, now being handled by the city council. Many council and planning commission members, including the mayor, are involved at different levels with Gray City Church. It would be my hope that if any council member has a personal interest in Gray City Church, rendering them unable to be impartial, they'd recuse themselves from voting on these issues. It is my Gray City Church that has led the discussion regarding this ordinance, though it is a conflict of interest with this church specifically, with which I am most concerned. Second, prior discussions with the planning commission were making significant headway in outlining a noise ordinance for outdoor amplification, and it is my hope that these constructive conversations with the entire community continue with the city council. What is not constructive is anyone trying to steer the conversation towards Easter egg hunts and vacation Bible school. This is distracting from the root of the issue, which is disturbing the livelihood and peace of the residential neighbors of churches and businesses alike. This is about applying the same rules to everyone, not giving special privilege to anyone. This is, no one is stifling religious freedom by asking churches to follow the same rules as everyone else. Third, using the police as a means to mitigate noise complaints is a core use of their time and expertise. Without an objective noise ordinance, the police won't even have a way of knowing whether a violation has occurred. Both churches and neighbors would benefit from clear guidelines. Wenatchee is not the only city to deal with this issue, and other communities have solved the problem by establishing clear decibel limits. Passing amendment 2020-12 to the noise ordinance that allows anyone to hold a public event on their property is a dangerous precedent, especially without a noise ordinance mitigating outdoor amplification. The people of Wenatchee want to be able to enjoy their yards and neighborhoods without being forced to listen to an outdoor concert, regardless of the source. It is my hope that you will consider voting on this ordinance as if it were your home and backyard in this beautiful and tranquil valley being affected. I ask the city council to reject this ordinance and consider establishing clear decibel limits in its place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley, and that all came through loud and clear, so we appreciate your comments. All right, so, that was through about F. How about G through M?
Hello?
Yes, who's this?
This is James Etier. My last name starts with an E, spelled E-T-H-I-E-R.
James, and you're.
And my address.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yes, your address.
It's 311 Hilltop Place.
Perfect.
Three and.
All right, James, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you. I'm also a neighbor of the Gray City Church. My property actually adjoins the north side of the church. The church is property, and they're completing their construction on the church at this time. I've been heavily involved with the Lower Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association around the issue of noise that originated from the property produced by the church on Easter Sunday in 2017, and then in May of 2018. And that noise would fall easily within what would be described as the current noise ordinance in the city as being disruptive, loud, disturbing, and raucous, and we brought that to the attention of the church, myself having spoken with one of the directors within the church and in the planning division. And it's widely accepted within our community that the noise was tremendous. It shook dishes in houses that are more than 500 feet away from the property and for several hours. But the church members themselves, the director that we've spoken to, have never said that it was disruptive or problematic. It was something that they did on their property. And it's that that we come to this point, and I'm happy with the noise ordinance, the proposal to the city council at this point, to leave it in terms of the current noise ordinance around raucous and disturbing noise as reasonable and easily accepted. It's not easily accepted. It is, as you can see, that our point of view is different from what the church's point of view has been around their production of noise to the date, and with their proposals to do outdoor events with loudspeakers, we are most concerned that leaving it to an ad hoc way of addressing this, and the only recourse in the community for us to call the police and ask the police to come over and listen to the music and the noise, really it's an inappropriate and a misplaced use of the police, and it wouldn't arrive at any real conclusion that would be beneficial to our neighborhood and the tranquility that we enjoy now in our homes. So, I am asking that the council at this time act on this to develop, whether the council themselves develop a science-based, easily measurable, and enforceable way of maintaining normal noise standards within our community so we can continue to enjoy our household. If the city council is not equipped or cannot do that, I would ask them to directly send it back to the planning commission and the planning division to come up with the standards that would be very clear, such things as normal decibels at 50 feet from the property line, what can be obviously and objectively measured and dealt with. You know, we live in a society that's based upon rules. We all live together, we have different points of view, but we need the rules and regulations so that we can come to live together better, and that's what we're really asking the city council at this time. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, James. Appreciate it. Any other members of the audience that wish to address the council at this time?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, I need your name and address for the record.
Tamara Heidley, 2930 Elvis Place.
Hi, Tamara, how are you?
Good, thank you.
All right, it's all yours.
Okay, I don't really have much more to add because I absolutely agree with Ashley and Jim. I just want you to consider the area that Gray City is in. It is a goal to be a mega church. We do not have any problem with them being a regularly defined church. We do not have any problem with them being a regular, regularly defined church. But they have not hidden their goal about wanting to open up the doors, the glass doors, to residential neighborhoods where concerts would be. If the rules and regulations around noise go away, as what you're talking about with adding churches to the new ordinances, then I am afraid that concerts, which they were talking about having 1,000 people, would eventually happen. And I just really want you to be able to think about it being in your neighborhood, because this would open it up. I also, we, we all want to be good neighbors, and I don't want to see things happen where other people say, "Well, I'm going to do my music louder than theirs." And there has been some talk of that. We certainly don't want a big fight happening. And I know that, there, there's one, there's a concern that I have. I know of at least two council members, and you, Mayor Kuntz, that are social media friends with Pastor Josh McPherson. I don't know how close everyone is, I, I don't, I don't know all of that, but I would hope that anyone that is a member of the church, or is close to any member, would recuse themselves from deciding on this issue. The last concern that I had, at one of the meetings that I believe was in February, I could be wrong, there was a sort of shift to a topic of what would happen to downtown events or sporting events if they have to have a different ordinance. And I do believe it was Councilmember Bailey that tried to explain that there is another ordinance for, for those events, and it's not included in that. But he was, whoever was sitting next to him said, "Just a minute," and then he never got a chance to come back and explain it. And it was another example of moving the topic to something else, and really not getting it's core issue. But people spend a lot of time talking about, "Oh, what if we can't have a ballgame?" And it has nothing to do with that. Mayor Kuntz, I have known you to be a very fair-minded person. You take things into consideration before making a decision, and I just ask that you and the council members will do the same in this instance, and I really thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tamara, appreciate it. Anybody else on the phone wish to address the council? We've had three, we've had Ashley Davis, James Evier, and Tamara Heidley. Anybody else?
Yes, Mayor, this is Kirk Hudson.
Hi Kirk, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, need your address for the record.
You bet. It's 1438 Somerset Drive, Wenatchee.
Perfect. It's all yours Kirk.
And, okay, just full disclosure, I am a member of Gray City Church, and certainly I appreciate the mayor and council's time. This has been a lengthy process, and I know that it's been very important to weigh all the considerations. I just wanted to comment in support of the proposed ordinance. I think it's consistent with the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act of 2000. I also believe that you have a comment in support from the elders of Gray City Church as well, a written comment that was submitted to the city earlier this week. With that, just wanted to say I'm in support of the ordinance as proposed, and thank you for your time.
Thanks Kirk. Anybody else on the phone wish to address the city council on this public hearing item? So I think at this point, I will hit pound five to mute our friends at home, star five, excuse me, whatever the one with all the little lines on it, yeah, that one. And we will go ahead and deliberate, so.
All participants are muted, and they can unmute themselves.
Just briefly, before we get started, there was a couple people asserted that there might be conflicts of interest. This is not a quasi judicial matter where that would be relevant. This is a legislative matter, you know, you can have interests in various things and still legislate, so it, it's just not an issue for what we're doing here today.
All right, council members, you have any questions of staff? You've heard all of the comments from the folks, so there's an ordinance before you, so this might be a good time for some discussion or questions of the staff.
So, so that we understand if we pass the ordinance, it goes into effect 30 days essentially, publication, all that stuff. If we don't pass it, similar to the land use code, it's, it's going to go into a, it's, we revert to our, well, we retain our current code, and the so-called moratoriums and whatnot disappear.
That's correct. So we just, okay.
And I think, I'll just sort of say a couple, a couple of comments. Obviously, noise ordinances are really difficult, and obviously, we've got residential areas, and we've got churches, schools. I understand Steve Smith's, you know, reading of the law that says we need to teach, treat governmental agencies and religious agencies, you know, sort of the same, so I think this is a really difficult issue. I'm, the land use one, I think, was fairly easy. This one is way more difficult. And, you know, I, if we don't pass it, we still have a noise ordinance that's in effect, and we can remand it back to the planning commission at some point to continue to work on a different noise ordinance, but I think, in my opinion, it's time for the moratorium to lapse, and we need to sort of, if that's what's going to happen, it, I think, in my opinion, I think we're done with moratoriums. We either adopt this, or something similar to this, or we just go back to the way it was prior, before we dealt with this, when we were dealing with what we thought was going to be a wedding venue, or a concert venue at one point in time, which sort of brought all of this to the forefront. It was over an issue that we thought was going to be a noise issue at some point.
I, I'd just comment that what I'm struggling with is, 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 and this is always, is balancing, usually it's balancing individuals' desires and community desires and needs, and, and that's what we're elected to do, and it's not always easy to, to do that. And what I've struggled with in this issue of a, of just an outright exemption for other public gatherings, goes actually back to our comprehensive plan, which is our overarching policy for uses in the city. And, and two of them that were pointed out by staff in the previous hearing were the, the goals and policies dealing with making sure that non-residential development, whether it's a religious institution, whether it's a public school, whether it's a private school, whether it's whatever non-residential activity that's allowed essentially in a residential context, that they occur, that the development is compatible with the existing residential neighborhood. And that, and that's what I struggle with in this case, that, that those policies are very strong to me, and I, and I take them to heart, the significant investments that people make in their homes, and making sure that these uses that we allow in those residential neighborhoods, which support those residential neighborhoods, whether it be a pump station, or water reservoir, or a church, or a school, that they be compatible with the livability in that, in that vicinity.
Anybody else want to say something?
Can you, can you clarify the current, well, the previous code, how that affects churches? Are they, are they able to hold outdoor services under the previous code, or not?
Well, so our current code provides that you can't have this noise.
So let's make sure we got current, and then we got the moratorium. So when you say current, I want to know whether that's.
Prior to the moratorium.
Okay, so the moratorium basically said you cannot do outside amplification.
Yes.
So if the moratorium goes away in 30 days, then the rule for outdoor noise would be?
Our, so our current code, our noise code.
And the ordinance that was just adopted by the council included the provision that the interim control goes away.
Yes.
That decision's been made.
Yeah.
All right.
Right, so our current noise code basically prohibits any loud, repetitive, raucous noise that's offensive to a reasonable person 50 feet from the property line.
Essentially, you'd be, a church would be at the same standard a resident would.
Okay.
That's right. So, but then we have a couple of exceptions to that, and it's essentially school or public ev, school events.
So it doesn't specifically talk about amplification?
No.
It just says it's exempt from our, this noise code.
Yes.
Right. So, you know, events at the school, like football games and band practice and that sort of thing would be exempt. The Apple Socks games, because they're on government-owned property, are exempt. And those are the pretty limited exemptions, that's it. The exemptions do not cover churches.
So, how does this pertain to federal law?
So there's a federal law out there that was passed, I don't remember the year, but it wasn't that long ago, that requires government land use regulations to treat religious entities on equal terms with other entities. So, we're totally within our right to regulate land uses, like sound, parking, that sort of thing. But we have to treat churches on equal terms as schools. So if you have a similar use between a church and a school, an outdoor amplified sound, we have to treat them the same. So if we allow the school to have amplified sound, we'd have to allow a church to have amplified sound. Otherwise, we'd be in violation of this federal law.
And federal law trumps local?
It would in this instance, yeah. So it makes it difficult for, for us to enforce our noise ordinance as it currently is.
I'll just put my comments out there. What I don't feel the new ordinance does is find a good balance between what we have now and what we need. It doesn't find a good balance for the residents around a facility like a church, and it doesn't allow the churches to, to function. So what I'm hoping we can do is find a balance between the two. I want the churches to be able to function and do things, but I also want to respect the rights of the neighbors, and they deserve the right to be able to have peace in their home, and to be able to enjoy their backyard if they want. And I can see where, if loud noise was so loud that they couldn't even carry on a conversation in their backyard, that's not fair to them. So I have a problem with what we're looking at adopting, because it opens it up not only to churches, but other types of public events, and I think it's way too open, and I don't think there's, as several people said, measurable guidelines that we can put in there. And I think that's what we need, is some measurable guidelines. I don't know exactly what those are, whether it's decibels, whether it's some form of scientific, as one gentleman said, measurable procedures that we can put into place.
So your thought would be just not adopt the ordinance, and 30 days, the moratorium's up, and our current code is the current code, and work within that with the planning commission to see what sort of tweaks need to be done?
There's actually an alternative to that as well. We could adopt what we're talking about tonight, but with the idea that we know we need to fix it, because it still isn't right. I don't know what the rules are, if we adopt this tonight, how soon we could go back and tweak it to put in some guidelines in addition, if, if we can't do that right away.
My view of the world is, I wouldn't want to pass something you don't like. I'd rather go back to the old rules that actually worked sort of okay, weren't perfect, and then go from the old rules and start tweaking, then pass something that the council isn't in favor of. That's just my personal opinion.
And so the only concern I have there is, we know, we know now very clearly that if we did that, we would be open to lawsuits, because.
Yeah, but we still, we got reasonable standards, we can deal with those as they come up, right? And, you know, maybe part of doing this is really thinking about, you know, it's just an interesting time when you, when you look at, because I, you know, when Steve Smith talked about, you know, well, you know, schools. Well, I think of a school, it's the indoors of Wenatchee High School, it's not the football stadium, and I think of schools as being the college, not the baseball stadium, and I think of churches of having indoor Sunday services and Wednesday services that aren't outdoors. Yet here we are, we're talking about the outdoor parts of a church service, and we're talking about the Panther football game. And somewhere in the middle there, there's got to be something that works. And, 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 so I would rather we spend time looking at those things, as opposed to passing something that just is sort of inefficient. And the other one was working okay, really, other than this one little issue that we had. It wasn't awful, and it was, we could sort of work through it. So I'm sort of inclined to, to not pass anything, and let the 30 days lapse, and I think we can remand it to the planning commission to say, "Hey, here's some of our concerns, and can we work at some of these other little tweaks," I guess.
It's apparent we're going to have to address, either way we go, we're going to have to address something.
Yeah.
I agree that we need to find that middle ground, but, but I also think that some of these guidelines also need to apply to the schools and the public venues now, because there's a lot of people that live in those neighborhoods that are disturbed by the sounds that go on today. You know, if the baseball go, game goes into extra innings, they're out there 10, 10:30 at night, and that's not fair to people who have shift work and things like that. So I really think we need to find that balance, or at least a better job of finding the balance.
I agree. I, I think, to me, the, and I, the reason we have zoning is to, excuse me, to segregate uses that are incompatible. Diesel truck repair shop next door to a, for a single-family residence is an incompatible situation, and so we, we don't allow that. And I, I take the position, I guess, that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but a church in a residential area, if they apply to do that, that's a conditional use, correct?
Correct.
All right. Condition means there's, there's regulation, there's limits that don't, would not apply under normal circumstances. And so I think that's, you know, that striking that balance is really, you know, easier said than done, but that's, it's something that we, I think we need to spend some more time on. But protecting, you know, that residential area, its primary use is for people to live and to enjoy, you know, the, the, well, the different words are used in, is used in our, in our ordinance, you know, be able to enjoy my, enjoy my space without undue interruption. So that's the primary purpose of having a residential area. So if you, if you want to have other functions within there, and we put conditions on that, then there, there is, it's not an unlimited situation, and that's where I have some real problems amongst others with this current ordinance, and it really opens up a, a very substantial door for a lot of abuse. I'm also concerned that, you know, when we get into this revision, that with the lack of definitions, what does regularly scheduled mean? Does that mean that if I say we're going to do it every day, then it's okay? I have a problem with that one. And if it's, if it's occasional, I mean, we, we need some further, some parameters. There needs to be some edges out here that we can work within, and everybody knows where the edges are. Our current, and I, I would agree, I guess, Your Honor, that there's, you know, for the most part, we get along, it's, it's, it's like a lot of things we do in government. It's the pothole in front of my house that's the problem, and the most important problem, if it's on the other end of town, I really don't care. And so, you know, to sit, to say, "Well, it isn't really all that bad," well, that's, that's fine, because I live down here, but the people that have to live next door to that, and be subjected to that, that's a pretty dang big deal. So I think we need to, you know, we've got to go back to the drawing board on this thing, and, and see if we can find a way forward. I certainly recognize that the federal law that we have to work within, but it isn't, I don't think it's inappropriate for us to have to take a look at those other uses as well, what schools are doing, what, whoever, government entity is doing what. I, I think that probably is okay to take, you know, to put that into the, into our conversation. So I'm, I'm, I am opposed to, to passing this tonight, just because there's, there's just, it's, it's too. So I'm I am opposed to passing this tonight just because they're just, it's too open-ended, and I think it, we end up worse off than we are now.
Mr. Mayor, may I add a process consideration?
Yeah.
This year with COVID, our planning commission's work schedule's been compressed essentially by about 40%. We've had to push a whole bunch of things into next year's cycle. So essentially, if we add something to their work plan this year, something has to come up, which is really tough because we really, what's on the schedule this year really needs to get done. So that I just wanted to bring up some options for you to consider if I could.
Sure.
One, you could do like you did in the residential footheld section. You could say, gee, by such and such timeframe, we want the planning commission to make recommendation. Given the schedule this year, next year, we want you to come back and give us something to consider and touch base at this time. So you could do that. If you want it sooner, though, you could do a hybrid committee. You could have two or three council members, two or three planning commission members, myself, maybe Laura Merrill, and the police chief and Steve Smith and any stakeholders should you want to do that. And we could work on on that this year sooner if you want to. But if it's the planning commission, I, my request is that we do that next year, and you give us sort of a date certain that you'd like to have something to bring back to you. So just wanted to add that if I could.
I'll leave it up to the council. I I think, again, I think our old ordinance was working sort of okay. And I guess unless someone senses a hurry to run out and change, I would give the planning commission all the time needed. Unless the council believes that this is an imperative issue that needs to be dealt with extremely on a quick timeframe.
I don't think so. I would suggest, I like suggesting work for other people, obviously, that perhaps in first gear, that perhaps Mr. Smith and Mr. De Vries and Mr. Nguyen Schwander even can just give us kind of what would look like a work plan schedule for this, so at least we have it in our pockets. So if we begin to run into issues, we can at least show somebody that, look, we haven't just backburnered this. Although here's all these other things that we're doing. We haven't forgotten it, and this is what we intend to do, just real general, just that we're working on it.
I just I just don't see the the need to put any undue pressure on the planning commission to deal with this directly in the next six months or so unless all of a sudden something comes up in the public where we're really struggling with an issue. But I agree with Mark. I think having the work plan sort of figured out and ready to go and.
And I think we need to remember, too, we focused on a on a particular land use issue with the noise tonight.
Right.
The noise ordinance affects a lot of other things.
Yes.
It's bigger than the land use.
It's a broader scope, which is probably why it's not really a planning commission item, except as it relates to land uses. It's.
Maybe it's a council.
It's automobile noise, machinery noise, equipment noise, yeah.
Depends a lot to reconsider. I I think the planning commission did an excellent job of putting this together, and I really appreciate what they did. I do agree it needs to have further consideration so that we get those other points taken into consideration. And I believe I agree with Mayor Coons that we should just wait, let the old one go back into effect if we can work with it. Do you think that's going to create a huge situation? It doesn't sound like it will.
We'll find out, won't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, although I would say I don't want it to see this necessarily just shelved. I think it's something we need to address, and our issues continue to come up. And I think it's, you know, I have a problem pushing it off into next year, but I think we need to at some point have some kind of a, you know, a date out there that we
I agree with you.
Just kind of ignore it.
But I don't want to put undue pressure on them. My mother got a huge agenda anyway.
So just to sort of wrap this item up, unless somebody has a problem, I'm going to give give us about 10 seconds to see if somebody wants to make a motion to adopt the ordinance, so I know that it's going to probably lapse. And if it lapses, then we can sort of, so is anybody interested in making a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-12 as presented? See, no takers. This dies for lack of a action item. So you guys will give us some sort of a work schedule at some point, and some plans and thoughts, and we'll sort of move forward. 30 days from today, the moratorium will, or 30 days from the day that I sign whatever, the moratorium will lapse, and we'll be under the rules that we've had for quite a while. That work?
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody at home who called in today and for your comments. Appreciate it. All right. You guys want to take a little quick, a quick break? Yeah, okay. Let's just take a little three-minute break, and we'll reconvene at 6:15. Let's get back at it. So we have, I think, seven action items today. The first is regarding professional services agreement for automated traffic safety cameras. So Chief Crown?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Steve Crown, your chief of police. So the item before you is about the automated traffic camera contract. And there isn't a ton of difference between the previous one. In 2009 is when we first signed contract with this company. There's been a couple of buyouts, and the partnerships have changed. The company is now now called Vera Mobility, but automated traffic safety is is still part of the company. The differences are that they have increased our rates, to my knowledge. They have not increased their charge, charges for the units during that 10-year timeframe. The current charges, they were $4,800 per unit. That figure has gone up to, I believe it was 5,000, I think it's 5,057. So roughly, that's an increase of 267 per site.
Will you remind me how many sites we have?
Three. So those sites are Kitas and Mission, Arondo and Shalan, and Fifth and Shalan. And so the overall increase per month is an additional $800 and $801. That's that's the specifics of the the contract. It's just raising that that additional rate pretty decent for the fact that we've had it for 10 years and they really haven't asked for anything. Under new contract, they have the option of doing a CPI increase after five years. So we may be back running this contract.
Maximum fine we can do is the maximum civil fine for, what's it, $164 or something?
$124.
Have we looked at whether or not that should be increased at all? Since I guess that's been around for quite a while.
Yeah, that's that's the full 10 years. I was looking in the city code, and I I believe it was not updated since the 2009 date.
Might make sense to look at that again and bring us something, maybe have the Public Safety Committee look at that and see if it's worthy of a slight bump.
Sure.
And let us know what other what other things that would be affected by. I don't know if that's parking, I don't know what the other civil infractions are that that would affect.
I recall that was limited to the highest level of parking ticket you had, which was the handicap parking spot, but that may have gone up.
It did. I think it's around 175.
Yes, you may be able to get that up.
Okay. Let's just, I'd like to take a look at it at least and make the council decide if that's something they're interested in.
Okay.
Has the number of cases dropped over time, or is it?
Brad, how are we doing for money? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't have a running history, but there was approximately 5,250 violations.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that the council authorize the mayor to enter into the professional services agreement with Vera Mobility for automated traffic safety cameras.
Second.
Motion, my council member Kula, second, my council member Harold, to authorize the mayor's signature on the contract with Vera for our red light cameras.
All participants are muted.
I kind of like it.
A little background music?
Well, the mayor's happy. Elevator music?
No.
We still have to have them have access.
We need the cop song. Here you go.
Just turn the volume down.
Wow.
All right. So we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, Chief, it's a, I thought somewhere when I went through this first time, I thought I saw some numbers on the
Yeah.
Each intersection. I'm not, I'm not coming.
It's on page 113, I think, or 16. Yeah, so.
Way over there. Okay.
Yeah.
Appears that we have seen a, yes, for lack of a better term, significant decline in not in the number of infractions, but the number of
It might be that.
Accidents in the intersections and so forth. Okay.
Yeah, just.
Is there anybody on the line?
It's doing what we, what we hoped it would do, at least to some degree.
So this is a report that we have to file every year in order to, this is actually something that's in RCW 4663170 that says you have to do a full report. Captain Reinfield actually filed our report for us this year. But just to give you an idea, Fifth and Shalan, back in 2010, there were 15 collisions at that intersection. This, in 2019, there were eight. And if you take 2012, there were 16 collisions, again, against the eight that have happened there. 2016, there were 15 collisions that occurred there. And it does, kind of almost like the citations that are generated from this, it, there's a lot of things. Weather dependency, construction actually helps us out and helps out the public because they have to slow down.
Yeah.
But I can tell you also that during one of the reviews or a contesting of one of the infractions, there was a full construction zone going on at Fifth and Shalan, and the guy contested it. And, I mean, it is blatant as heck that everybody stops besides him, and he keeps on going. And so you can't always rely on construction to curb people's driving. But that just gives you a little bit of an idea.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right. Any questions? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Thanks, Chief. All right. Brad, I was hoping that members of the public would want to address us on these two issues regarding our purchasing policies and list of funds, but apparently they're all off the phone now, so.
It is quite exciting. Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Brad Posey-Jack, Finance Director. I think the first item we've got is ordinance 2020-15, updating the city code to reflect the fund accounting structure that we use. We adopted this a couple, or I guess last year, and then, or a different ordinance last year to change how we organize our code. A couple of funds were left off, a couple of funds were added when we issued new bonds. And then one fund was combined with another fund, so there are minor changes that I don't know that anybody really cares about except for the auditors and myself. So I'd be happy to ask any questions you may have, or answer any questions you may have.
Lots of different funds. We take care of them in there.
There are.
Yeah. All right, any questions for Brad? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll take up this exciting motion to, for the city council to adopt ordinance number 2020-15, amending and restating Section 1.20.010 WCC Fund Defining Purpose.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hornby, a second by Councilmember Bailey, to adopt ordinance 2020-15, amending and restating Section 1.20.010 of the Wenatchee City Code regarding funds defined and purposes. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And purchasing policy.
Yeah, the next item is Resolution 2020-23, updating our purchasing policy. In 2017, we kind of completely rewrote our purchasing policy manual. And there were a lot of items that as, as we started getting into it and using it, we realized that they weren't quite as clear as we would like. So it took a bit to get around to doing, but we've updated a lot of the language in it. We, there's also a couple of things in here that we've updated to reflect new thresholds that the state has that we're required to follow. But most of it is just clarifying our current purchasing practices, just to put some examples in there, reword it so that, that it makes sense to how we're actually operating. So I don't believe that there's anything significant changing from the way we have been purchasing to what we will be. It's just a little bit more clear. Maybe, anything in here that tickled your fancy?
And the Finance Committee dealt with this as well. We had lots of questions for Brad. All right, is there any questions? I'd entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move to adopt or approve Resolution Number 2020-23, adopting amended and restated purchasing policy and procedures manual.
Second, motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Hornby, to adopt Resolution 2020-23, adopting an amended and restated purchasing policy and procedures manual. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Brad. Thank you. All right, expansion of the water boundary. Mr. Jammerman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll make this quick. We're here tonight to ask that the city council approve the mayor's signature to amend the regional water contract boundaries. East Wenatchee Water District has proposed a small annexation out on their south end of their boundary. And regional partners met and discussed it in December. But it does take an amendment by the three parties, us, the district, of course, and the PUD. And so this would allow them to move forward and start to work with the Department of Health to amend their boundaries. There is a map in your packet that shows the annexation area. And that's, do you have any questions?
I think the, the issues that I had with this was, do we have enough water in the regional water portfolio to handle the expansion? We have plenty of water. Obviously, our community is going to grow and this boundary is going to expand probably again at some point. But we do have plenty of water, so I was fine with the concept of expanding the boundary. And it looks small on that thing, but it's 1,000 acres, isn't it?
I think so, yeah.
Something close to that. Any questions for Rob or for me? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve the Second Amendment to the regional water contract and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment in substantially similar form as the attached amendment.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Quayvas, to approve the Second Amendment to the regional water contract, authorize the mayor to sign the amendment in substantially similar form as the attached amendment. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Rob. Uh, oh, decamp facility. Who's got that? Hi, Jessica.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Jessica Shaw, Deputy Public Works Director for Utilities. And tonight, we have the next round of the interlocal agreement with Shalan County for the operation and maintenance of our decamp facility. As you may recall, that is where we take all of our street sweepings and the waste that we pull out of catch basins. And we built this facility back in 2015 with some ecology grants and helped us stay in compliance as the stormwater regulations increased about how we manage that waste. It's also nice to see about two years ago, the state adopted new solid waste rules. We were exempted from those because we have this facility that complies with the stormwater regulations. So very thankful not only for the ecology funding, but also our regional partners that helped make that happen. So currently, the only regional partner we have is Shalan County, though we've offered agreements to other agencies. So, so Shalan County does help pay for some of the operating and maintenance costs and also participates in some of the capital improvement projects that we have coming up. So the old agreement expires August 6th. And so we were proposing a new agreement to continue on for another five years in much the similar manner that we've been operating in the past with Shalan County. Are there any questions about decamp facility or the interlocal agreement?
Two questions. How's the facility working with the new modifications?
It is working very well. So we haven't had any issues and the crews have been very pleased with the modifications and no problems.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Good news. And has there been any movement for Douglas County or East Wenatchee to join us?
So Douglas County has recently inquired again. And I shared with them the latest version of the user contract that we developed with Shalan County. And Steve Smith helped us prepare. The public, Shalan PUD is also very interested and I think they may be getting close. So you may see me back with a user contract to approve for Shalan County PUD to use the facility. But there's all, and also the Washington State Department of Transportation is interested in coming to use the facility and we've offered them a user contract as well. They said that it's held up because the Attorney General is reviewing it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Excuse me, with potentially several new partners in there, does that, what does that do to capacity? Are we, is it big enough to handle all of that and more to?
Yeah, good question. Yes, right now, we have plenty of capacity and we've been monitoring that. We keep track of how much goes in and out. And that's also part of the user contracts is, the way this works, the city and the county have first priority for capacity. And if at any time it starts to look like we don't have capacity, those user contracts, we would let those folks leave. They would have to find somewhere else. So that is one of the advantages for Shalan County. They're actually our partner in this and everyone else is just a user of the facility, so. But yes, we have plenty of capacity. It was designed to accommodate all of the parties I've just mentioned. In the beginning, we met with the Department of Transportation, the PUD, all, both cities and counties. Everybody came together and so it is sized for everybody. But right now, we just have Shalan County and the city using it.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Jessica? If not, I would entertain a motion. Well, Your Honor, I would move that the council approve the interlocal agreement for the Wenatchee Valley Regional Decamp Facility with Shalan County and authorize the mayor's signature. Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Bailey, a second by Councilmember Kula, to approve the interlocal agreement for the Wenatchee Valley Regional Decamp Facility with Shalan County and authorize the mayor's signature. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And some stormwater facility. Jessica.
So this is a memorandum of agreement for funding between the State Department of Ecology, the Shalan County PUD, and the city. The PUD has had some oil spills at the dams, both Rocky Reach and Rock Island, over the last few years. And as a result, they are subject to fines by the state. And so the Natural, Natural Resource Damage Assessment Committee, which is made up of, is led by Department of Ecology, but includes the tribes, the state parks, Fish and Wildlife, DNR, some other representatives from the communities. They got together and they decided that the PUD should be fined $43,016.82 for these spills that they've had over the years. And normally, what would happen is the PUD would write a check. It would go into a pot of funding that would support water quality projects in the Puget Sound area or west side of Western Washington. The PUD was pretty adamant that they wanted this money to stay local if possible. And so they approached the city and asked, what water quality projects do you have that we can help fund, that we can present to the Natural Resource Damage Assessment Committee and see if we can get their approval to let this money stay locally? So Jennifer Burns with Shalan County PUD and I presented, actually offered up a couple of projects. We have our Peachtree Street Outfall Project, which is a water quality project, as well as this North Wenatchee Avenue Stormwater Quality Project. And the PUD was especially excited about the North Wenatchee because the water ultimately would be going into the Heran Natural Area. And so this will be treating some of that water that comes off of North Wenatchee. And so the committee agreed that they liked the project. They liked that it was shovel-ready and mostly designed. And so the PUD was given authorization to write the check to the city of Wenatchee instead of just Department of Ecology. So this agreement just sets forth that they're going to give the money to us and that we're going to use this for the project to install a water quality vault. And it's going to be an easement that the city has along our stormwater main. And we're planning on completing this project probably in 2022, but we have until 2025 to spend the money. So just in case things get delayed, there's a little bit of extra time built into this agreement.
Good deal.
Yeah, it's a very good deal.
It's a really good deal.
You don't want to cheer for the dams to leak oil, but if they do, you might as well be the beneficiary.
Well, I especially like the idea of collecting it and using it kind of in the area where it was.
Yeah.
Where it was instead of shipping all the money over to the Puget Sound.
So any questions for Jessica? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that the city council approve the memorandum of agreement between Shalan County Public Utility District, City of Wenatchee, and Washington State Department of Ecology and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Quayvas, to approve the memorandum of agreement between Shalan County Public Utility District, the City of Wenatchee, and Washington State Department of Ecology and authorize the mayor's signature. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Hey, Jessica. Hello, Charlotte. How are you today?
I'm great, thanks. How are you?
Excellent. How's a lot of our construction projects and the parks going?
Busy. We had a big pour day of concrete pour at Chase Park today. Looks really good. I'm stoked.
Bunch of people out there working on that.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Excellent.
Charlotte Mitchell, Capital Projects Manager for Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Services. What I have today for you is a professional services agreement with geoengineers for that Saddle Rock Phase 2 project. This, this will be for the design of the Phase 2 project. And then we have the option of maybe amending it later and having them do some of the construction inspection as well. So they're the folks who did Phase 1. We were really pleased with their work. And so we were hoping to continue to work with them in this, in this instance. We are super stoked. On June 26, Ecology finally signed our grant. So we have the grant in hand now and can sign this contract with your permission with geoengineers to get started on the, on the design and construction. So if we sign this soon, we will have the, some data collection this summer and early, probably mostly just this summer, and they'll work through it in the fall. They're going to go out with that XRF thing again and test. There's a lot of bare kind of areas, especially, you know, up towards the top of Saddle Rock. And they, Ecology wants us to figure out what exactly is the arsenic content there and, and do some mapping of that and try to figure out if there's maybe ways to mitigate, you know, with, using benches so people don't sit on the ground or maybe steer people away from areas that are higher in arsenic than others. And also, they'll be doing some geotechnical research just to figure out, you know, if we realign the road, if, if it's feasible, you know, and where we should put it to make it safe, to stay on the, on the hillside and, instead of sliding down. So then they would design it this winter and then we would hopefully go to bid in the spring, next spring '21, and construct next summer, the summer of '21. Any questions?
Hey, no more questions for Charlotte? I'd entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move to authorize the mayor to sign a professional services agreement for the Saddle Rock Phase 2 interim action between the City of Wenatchee and Geo Engineers Incorporated.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Bailey, to authorize the mayor to sign a professional services agreement for Saddle Rock Phase 2 interim action between the City of Wenatchee and Geo Engineers, Inc. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Hey, Charlotte. I don't know what to talk about the mayor's report. We had fireworks last week. I was not here for them. I heard it all went really well in the park and people didn't stay and didn't have any problem getting people out of there. And I heard the show was great, so I didn't hear any complaints from anybody about that part. Jose told me that in his neighborhood, they were letting off the illegals, but. So I think that went pretty well. Nothing really new on the NEPA stuff. Still trying to figure out whether we should be going forward or not. I did send an email out to Richard Durrock and Steve Wright today to see if they're willing to help participate. But staff's been working hard on just trying to figure out sort of where to, if we decide to end that, sort of where, where to lapse a little bit. You've been talking some about LRF lately, you know, we've still got some money to spend between the railroad tracks and the waterfront and basically the old Cascade Building to the Town Toyota Center. So don't know exactly what we're thinking, but I just think all the department heads are sort of pondering different things that might take place along that stretch. Laura's working and Matt are working with lineage to get the rail spur so we can remove it. Probably going to take us six months or so to make that happen and then. So I think that stuff's all moving forward just fine. Still in Phase 1.9, probably not getting to Phase 2 or 3 for a while. The cases at the hospital are pretty high. There are 18 in the, in the hospital today with COVID, only two from out of the area, so 16 locals. Stu Fried said they're doing a better job of understanding the combination of drugs and, and not putting people on ventilators, but just lots of oxygen seems to be working better. So, yeah, things are sort of very active on, on that scene. But I think lots of stuff on that, wearing masks now and a lot of public getting the push out to wear masks. I see a lot of them around here. People, I think, have done a pretty good job. Laura, what else we got? What's that? Okay. Councilmembers?
I had a Association of Washington Cities, our, our second Legislative Priorities Committee meeting. Hard to remember which day of the week these are, probably Tuesday. Could have been Monday, though. And there's so many Zoom meetings. I, I'm so done with Zoom.
Yeah.
Get used to it.
And, and the components that, you know, no, no big surprise, components that, you know, AWC has in the topic areas. And while there's, was, there's considerable discussion, obviously, of budget and finance issues facing cities and the state and the recognition of that. One of the areas that I was interested in that, that keeps percolating up is related to LRF, the lift programs and the other modifications of tax increment financing. And I, I'm hopeful that the, that. hopeful that the, that AWC will be making a push through the legislature about more of those programs, more of the so-called innovative financing, recirculating the dollars. There's obviously with the, with the budget and finance issues, there's going to be some pushback from the state on sharing sales tax revenue.
Right.
And that, which is going to be the challenge. It, it was hopeful. So we have, I think, two or three more meetings before we present a proposal to the AWC board for adoption of actions, but everyone recognizes that the 2021 session, you know, when there is going to be an executive, or a special session, which is not going to be in August anymore, it's someplace else, that things are just, you know, we're just got to hang on.
Yep.
And then lastly, the component on this, the transportation packages are still working, still working through.
Right.
So they're still, so it takes a couple of years to gestate those, and it's been a couple of years, so they expect in 2021 to potentially have a good transportation package.
And Brad's been working on some preliminary budget stuff for next year and this year, so you'll probably get it out of the window. Is that presentation next week? Okay, so you'll get some updated numbers, and we're, we're sort of projecting revenue to look like, and, you know, we're not, we haven't started the 2021 budget yet, but I think we're starting to think about what that might look like, and we, it, most likely we'll get to a point where we may have to go away from our budget policies a little bit. I mean, this, this is going to be next year. We've got enough money in our bank account to keep everything going, but we are supposed to have reoccurring revenue and reoccurring expenses equal, so we may have to have some sort of adjustment to our policy for the 2021 budget cycle if we're going to try to continue to do all the things that we're, we're doing, so. We got just some things to think about. I hope they'll over it next Thursday with us at our work session and, or show you where things are sort of coming in, and I think the construction projects, Robert, going well. I see all kinds of sidewalks getting tore out, and it looks like they're getting ready for pavement and rebuilding sidewalks, and got some good bids on their first street. Got good bids on that, I think, so you'll be seeing that probably in two weeks.
We're, excuse me. Oh, no, go ahead.
We're, we're out to, have we gone out to bid for them, or gone out to bid on the remodel?
Yes, and I don't know when they're due, not for a while yet, but probably what, end of the month? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, what's that?
Charlotte says 28.
I trust Charlotte. She says the 28th, it's either the 27th or the 29th, so. I'm joking, everything she does is perfect. Yeah, so that's out for bid, and we'll see what those look like when they come back.
I just want to thank Public Works for the great job they're doing on those sidewalks. I mean, they look sharp.
Yeah, and they did have a little, who, who, who is the, come tell them about the experiment, the experiment today.
Oh. So today we had a company called Precision Concrete come into town from the west side. They wanted to demo their product that they're doing for the city of Seattle, where they have a machine that can shave off tripping hazards a quarter inch or greater, which is if you have a tripping hazard that's quarter inch or greater, you're out of compliance with ADA. So they did 10 sections of sidewalk over in Memorial Park here, and it was really impressive. They can do, they can shave a quarter inch off in about seven minutes and you haven't meet ADA standards.
Oh, that's great.
The pricing is quite favorable compared to what we, what we could do with, with, not only with our own machinery, but with our staff. So we're thinking about taking some of our sidewalk repair money and using it, and they've told us that we can piggyback onto the Seattle contract, and because of the volume that Seattle's doing, we would get good pricing because of that. So Wenatchee School District was there, we've had interest from other, other entities that may also want to do it here in the valleys.
Does that do anything when you open up the, the aggregate part of the concrete? Does that do anything for long-term health of the concrete? Does it?
We haven't seen that.
When you lose that, that finish, and you go to the?
Yeah, in fact, kind of a related note, we've had, you know, we had interest from developers to, to be able to cut the curb out when they put a new driveway in.
Yeah.
Councilmember Huffakers, you know, I've talked about that, so we've been letting, I've talked to Douglas County, and they've, they allow it, and we're now allowing it here in Wenatchee. They've seen no degradation in the concrete, and, and so they're, they're holding up really well.
I thought that was interesting today when you told us about that, because we got lots of tripping hazards, you saw the thing, and it's like, God, if we can knock out a quarter of them a year for the next four years for a reasonable price, maybe we can keep AWC happy. Yep.
That's great.
All right, anything else, councilmembers?
I just have something in regards to AWC. I sit on the education committee, and that's where we decide what we're going to talk about at the convention and the other trainings, and if you folks have any ideas or anything you'd like to see, send them to me, because we should be having a meeting here shortly.
Okay.
And the Masala, our sister city board, we haven't had any meetings because of COVID.
No one's coming here and no one's going there.
Yeah, no one's going over there and no one's coming here, and everybody's pretty sad about it, but we're looking forward to next year, hopefully getting together. We have a meeting on July 28th to start talking about next year and planning for it and promoting it, so.
All right. Keith Smith, nice to see you. Keith?
So since Ruth isn't here, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of the change at Shalan Douglas Health District with Barry retiring and Bruce Buckle taking his place temporarily. They've got a lot of work to do to try and get things solidified back up there, in my opinion.
Yeah.
So also, just wanted to give an update from Solid Waste. The moderate waste facility is still open and doing well. They've actually had three semi-loads of hazardous waste shipped over to Clean Harbor now, where they either turn it into fuel or recycle it or incinerate it, so things are going well there. There was a new grant or an increased grant amount from the state and Ecology that would help Shalan Douglas, or Solid Waste, and that was immediately rescinded by the governor, so they're looking at maybe having some budget issues this year that we'll have to talk about in our meeting next month. That's all I got.
Okay. All right, everyone, so a work session next week. We adjourned.
Thank you.